Oye, Madira. Good evening. It's seven o'clock. I'm going to call the meeting to order and ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Thank you, Mayor. Mr. Greg David.
Present.
Mr. Tyler Dean.
Here.
Ms. Emily Hamburg.
Here.
Mr. Tom Schmitz.
Present.
And Mr. John Welch.
Present.
And you have a quorum, Mayor.
Very good. Thank you. This evening, we unfortunately couldn't find a pastor to help us lead in prayer, so we'll do a moment of silent prayer. Amen. Please join me in a pledge allegiance to the American flag.
When we visit the flag, the United States of America and to the Republican Party, which stands as one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This evening, we have a proclamation for American Red Cross Month. This is observed at every March. Red Cross uses this month to honor and celebrate all volunteers who support the mission of their organization. Local civic groups often host blood drives in Bel Air, and this proclamation supports the Red Cross in the great work they do. So, the proclamation says, "To the citizens of Bel Air, Kansas, greetings. Whereas March is American Red Cross Month, a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those who volunteer, take life-saving courses, or provide financial donations to support an organization whose mission is to help those in need. And whereas, we would like to remember those who help all of us here in Bel Air, Kansas, by giving their time to help their neighbor, and thank our heroes, our volunteers, class takers, and financial supporters who help us assist those in need. And whereas, the American, the, in the city of Bel Air, the American Red Cross works tirelessly through its employees and thousands of volunteers to help when disaster strikes, when someone needs life-saving blood, or comfort of a helping hand. And whereas, across the country, the American Red Cross responds to nearly 70,000 disasters a year, and provides some 400,000 services to military members, veterans, and civilians, collects and distributes about 40% of the nation's blood supply, and trains more than 7 million people in first aid, water safety, and other life-saving skills every year. And whereas, our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to fulfill its humanitarian mission, the Red Cross continues to offer help and comfort to those in need. Now, I therefore, Jim Benage, Mayor of the City of Bel Air, on behalf of the entire city council, do hereby claim March 2025 as American Red Cross Month in Bel Air." Excuse me. Move on to determinate agenda additions. Are there any additions to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll move on to the consent agenda. So, in addition to the minutes of the February 18th city council meeting, the consent agenda includes other items, including applications for fireworks, sales permit, and petitions and restoration, resolutions for improvements to the Sir Arthur Heights Estates.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I make a motion to approve the consent agenda as listed and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. David. All in favor, say aye.
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 All opposed? Any opposed? The motion carries five to zero. Move on to discussions of approval and appropriations ordinance 2504. This ordinance encompasses expenses and one payroll cycle from February 12th through February 25th. Expenditures amount $278,692 and some cents. No reported expenses for infrastructure costs for new developments were paid during this timeframe.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I move we approve appropriation ordinance number 25-04.
I'll second.
A motion by Mr. Dean, a second by Mr. Schmidt. Call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. City requested appearances. Evening, we have Lee Garver with, Ken Lee with Garver to discuss and present an award. Mr. Lee.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I appreciate the opportunity to come in tonight. Last year, we did the Cozy Drive Award Project where it was constructed in a existing, it was an existing sand street, sand street in a neighborhood here in Bel Air, and the city, city decided to go ahead and work with the citizens on that road to do a petition with the city kicking in money, money on it. And it ended up being a pretty cool little project as we went through it. And when we got done, Ann was the one who suggested that we put this up and nominate it to ACEC Kansas for the Engineering Excellence Award in the small project category. And so, that's for projects under $1.2 million. And it was nominated, and it was selected for that award. And I just wanted to kind of mention a few things that kind of made it a worthy of award. One of them is, is with a project like that, where you're in a tight space, only a single point of access, it, it's difficult to construct a project like that. And city staff, and us, and Pearson all worked together on the project to work carefully on the construction sequencing to make sure that folks had access throughout construction. And that was a difficult process, and everybody worked together on it, and it turned out really well. Another thing is, is drainage and flood prevention. The pipes under the roadway were undersized a little bit, so one of the things we did is we improved the size of the pipe, plus we put in a cross-street drain system that would carry the water, collect it, and carry it out to the channel and to minimize ponding in the area. Another factor is limited right-of-way there. It was not designed as a cul-de-sac originally. There was a plan, when that was first done, for the road to curve around backward the nursery is at.
Right.
For connection. So, there was not a cul-de-sac design there. So, we had to work with Cedric County to get a fire turnaround. We wanted to improve the access for fire trucks and, you know, trash trucks, mail, and all that. So, we had to work with them on the geometry of that turnaround. It's a much, much better place to drive. I don't know if you've ever driven out there, but when it was a sand street, me driving a full-size truck, it was an adventure to even get a three-point turnaround down there some days. But now, it's a much easier place to drive, and it works much better, and it provides a better environment for emergency services than everybody else. And then, finally, just reductions in maintenance and protection of public health. The city no longer has to go and grade that road multiple times a year. Don't have to spend money on rock on it. The residents don't have to be getting dust in their face blowing around when people drive on it. So, there is a number of different elements on this project that made it a positive benefit for the community. It turned out great. The residents were great to work with during the construction. And even when we had our information meeting beforehand, they had suggestions that were helpful in getting the project to the finish line. So, for all those reasons, it was selected for the ACEC Engineering Excellence Award. So, I have this award to give, and I was going to give this to Ann today, so.
Very good. Well, I'm really glad that came together well. That was one of those projects we've been trying to get done and finally got there. So, that's good. Thank you. Next item on the agenda is citizen concerns. Do we have any citizens that like to speak at council tonight?
I did not receive any.
Okay. Hearing none, we'll move on to the next item. Councilmember reports. So, Mr. Dean, you have a report to sign.
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Thank you. So, I have a few items. A quick reminder of the Bel Air Chamber meeting, lunch tomorrow, every first Wednesday of the month, so you're welcome to attend. If you'd like lunch, I think there's, they take, they take cash. If you'd like to stay for lunch or come late, they usually start the presentation at noon, so just a reminder there. I also was able to attend the KDOT Transportation Safety Conference today. I'll also be there tomorrow for part of the day. Learned quite a bit about just different safety initiatives that KDOT is looking at, as well as others. WAMPO actually presented during one of the sessions on some things that they're, they're looking forward to doing. So, excited to see and learn more about those initiatives and help those plug into the K254 Quarter Association and, and other things. And then, I was going to announce, and I mentioned this last month, that I had applied for the Champions Institute for Smart, Smart Growth Cities. And I did receive confirmation today that I was selected for that cohort. So, I'm excited to do that. And that program, just a little bit, is just to help participants learn from national experts and build skills to support goals for creating safer, healthier communities. So, I'm excited to do that and look forward to bringing that back to help our city. That's all I have. Thank you.
Very good. And congratulations for being selected. So, that's great news. Mr. David.
No report. Thank you.
Mr. Schmidt.
No report.
Mr. Welch.
I'm going to brag on myself. I gave a pint of blood last week since it's National Red Cross Month.
Very good.
I'm working on 14 gallons.
All right. That's, that's very commendable. Thank you. So, okay. Ms. Hamburg.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I attended CCA meeting on Thursday, the 27th. Moving forward, chose the, the contractor for the wastewater plant expansion, so it's nice to be at that point. And bond sale was this morning, so, but I think you're going to cover all this probably, so I won't steal any more of your thunder. Thank you.
Well, that's, it's okay. So, so I'll move on to Mayor's report. So, on February 25th, I was advised of a Facebook post on Bel Air's Chamber, Facebook page supporting USD 259 bond issue. So, since Bel Air Chamber received some taxpayer dollars, it is not appropriate for the Chamber to be taking political positions, pro, con, or otherwise. There were, we were able to get this pulled down within about an hour after I learned about it. On behalf of Bel Air, we apologize to anyone who have seen this post. It simply should not have occurred, and we will take, talk at tomorrow's Chamber meeting about mitigation to keep this happening and recurring in the future. On February 27th, I also was at the CCA board meeting. As Ms. Hamburg said, we did award, sent a notice of award contract to BRB Contractors of Topeka in the amount of $20,737. I'm sorry, $20,737 and $43 to expand the wastewater treatment capacity. And this includes three add alternatives for work to replace conductors at the headworks, electrical room, and pump disconnects, replace all control terminal blocks in the headworks electrical room, and replace submersible pump conductors and disconnects. So, as you know, wastewater is highly corrosive. It seems to get all the electrical components, so we thought this is a prudent time to go on and get those replaced, so we don't have problems for them in the immediate future. So, the bid is a 920, 912-day contract days, so it's two and a half years to complete. The contract is forthcoming. We will outline specific requirements. Right now, the target completion for the expansion will be sometime about the end of 2027. The board also approved the re-roofing and painting of five Bel Air wellhouses for about $24,000. And today, CCA bonds were put on the market and received a very good rate of 3.97%. I signed the bond purchase agreement today. On Thursday, a special CCA board meeting will be held via Zoom to consider bond resolution. And then, next week, Bel Air and Park City will individually consider appropriate city ordinances related to these bonds. Yesterday, on March 3rd, I represented Bel Air at a reception for Northrop Grumman CEO Kathy Warden at WSU. I have a grade school friend who is Northrop Grumman Director of Property, so he knows Ms. Warden and was on a first-name basis. I believe he reports directly to her. It was good to be able to make that connection with Ms. Warden. So, I'll now ask for CCA attorney for her report.
Thank you, Mayor Benage. The only thing I was going to comment on is later in our agenda, there is going to be an item about a program partner agreement. The motion is different because it's asking council's question about whether you would like the agreement to be a fixed term or an automatically renewable agreement. It's, I haven't seen this before, but I just wanted to make sure that you all know that there is a difference. On this specific agreement with an auto-renewable, it's simply that. It's an agreement that renews without manual input. It's just something that renews at every anniversary period, whenever that anniversary period is. There are pros and cons to this type of agreement. The pro, of course, is going to be it's a time saver. If this is an agreement that works for all the parties, they've negotiated certain terms, and everyone is happy, then of course, it would save time instead of having to go back at that effective date, renegotiate, sit down, and find out if they need to add new terms. Another thing that makes it a really time saver is that it's continuous service. Staff can put in a schedule. They know that it's something that they need to, it's a forecast. They know they need to make comments or budget, budgetary allowances for that program, and it's something they can depend upon, not just our staff, but also the program partner as well. One of the cons would be if you have an agreement and you perhaps want to terminate it, you need to be very careful and not miss that termination deadline, because if you were to miss it, courts have found that you need to abide by those terms. So, you may find yourself in an agreement for another year, waiting for that deadline to come back around. Another con is if organizations were to have too many, then it could be difficult to manage, difficult to monitor. So, someone would need to be responsible for checking in, reviewing those agreements. If there's some type of cost, maybe they need to consider a renegotiation to a lower cost, or maybe they want to change some of those conditions. But there are pros and cons to this type of an agreement. It will be up to council to make that decision, of course, and I'm glad to answer questions about that specific program partner agreement. But I wanted to share that now so that when you do come to that item, you at least have that background information.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Henry.
Thank you, Mayor. I know we talk about this quite often, but it's been the number one thing we've been doing the last year is our ERP upgrade, and I want to provide a quick update for you. This affects every staff member I have and every aspect of our city, so I think it's very important that we continue to revisit just what we're doing here in the last year with our efforts and what we'll continue to do for the next several years to get used to the new system and work with when it. This is where our old system looked like, the technology tree or infrastructure. All the red buttons are manual entries of some sort that staff have to do. A lot of the yellow squares are different systems we had doing different tasks for us. This is what we purchased. If you notice, there's a lot less red marks and a lot less yellows. But to get there is a lot of time and a lot of learning and a lot of migration. As you know, last year, we did finance module was put up very, redid a whole chart of accounts for us and everything that involves the finance element. That's the brain of our operation. Utility billings up and running. I'm happy to report. Last Tuesday was the first shut-off in four months because of this transition. We started the, the day before with 227 accounts getting shut off. Well, part of this new system, we can text reminders to account holders. And for, in that first 24 hours, we went from 227 to 106 that we shut off. So, almost over a 50% decrease. Usually, we have around 100 to 90 shut-offs in a month, so I'm real excited to see without that long lag if we can get that down to 40 or 50, because what that does is it alleviates a lot of time Public Works has to do to go around town. So, that's already paying off. Payroll and time and attendance, time and attendance modules are up and running. We used to have to do all paper time cards, and we're starting to transition to all digitized and computerized, as well as where an employee will come in and wave a badge that's clock in and clock out. Court is really rocking and rolling. They have 30 years of history that they migrated over, so that's a huge project for Lindsay, and she's doing an amazing job with that. It started back in 1989, so just to let you know a little bit of that. The huge element of the court pay system is now, after it's set up, and we're looking, April, April 26th is looking like going to be the start date for that. But if a resident maybe drives a little too fast, they can go online and pay their ticket online. So, that's a huge success that we're going to have from this. Rec went live yesterday. I, I think Barry said DayCamp is filling up quick already, that we had over 100 transactions in the first day on the rec system module. So, I thought that was worthy of reporting. Planning and zoning, as you remember, is kind of our last module to set up, and this will give contractors the ability to log in and see all their permits they have outstanding. It'll also allow them to request inspections, pay permits online. So, these are massive things that we're doing, and I give all the credit to my staff and, you know, the leaders that, that we have in place in, in this organization. It's not easy to go through a whole year of change, and we're continuing to go through change. So, really, I'm trying to be their biggest cheerleader and their biggest support system I can be, but they're doing all this work, and they're doing a great job at it. In the future, we'll work on work orders for Public Works, our inventories, fixed asset management, and then eventually, the smart meter system. We've discussed where a resident can log on and see their meter running in real time, which would be nice. So, all these new type of technologies we install, it sounds weird to say paying online is a new technology for cities, it sometimes is, but we're getting up to the times, and ultimately, what we're trying to do is create the best data we can bring back to you guys to make great decisions for the city and for the management of our operations. So, thank you, Mayor.
Well, I'm glad to hear that progress is going well with that program. Like we said at the beginning, we need to make sure we do this right, so we don't, we don't have a lot of hiccups and underused software. I knew it would be a year or two. All of these, these systems always take that long, so anybody that thinks they can shortcut them, they're only kidding, kidding themselves. So, I'm glad we're making good progress, so that's good news. Okay. Move on to ordinance resolutions and final actions. The first item is a bid for paving improvements on Arthur Heights, and the developer of Arthur Heights Estates is ready to move forward with paving improvements. Four contractors submitted bids. With Preto Construction offering the lowest bid, and the paving project came in above engineering's estimate from the original petition amount. So, revised petitions and resolutions were approved earlier in this meeting through, in the consent agenda to cover the increases in cost. The cost of the improvements for these projects will be financed through bond spread at special assessments against benefiting lots. So, Ann Stevens, our city engineer, is here to discuss and answer questions.
So, this is the project that I mentioned the last meeting, that there was an error in the contractor's bid, and they put them in different envelopes, number one, and then there was a mathematical error, number two. Both of those are fairly minor and pretty regular for the city to waive discrepancies. That's not really an issue. I just wanted to make sure that the council was aware of that. The mathematical error still had, even with the mathematical error, Preto was still the low bid on the project. We've worked with them on several projects. They have done a very good job. I have no hesitation working with them again.
Any questions or concerns for Ann, from Ms. Stevens?
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Schmidt.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the bid from Preto in the amount of $310,520 for paving improvements to serve Arthur Heights Estates and authorize the mayor to sign all related documents.
I'll second. A motion by Mr. Schmidt, and a second by Mr. David. Any questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero. Move on to item B, it's the Bel Air Rec. It's the Bel Air Rec has offered numerous successful tumbling classes in the past. And I think this is the one that Ms. that Ms. Schrock was talking about with the options. We offer, we have offered classes both by agreement with an outside group as well as hiring local instructors. Recreation staff began searching for a local instructor in 2023, but there was little interest. So recreation staff then reached out to Wichita Gymnastics. Excuse me. And their proposal agreement is now under consideration. And the Assistant Recreation Director, Ashley, you see here, so Brian, so it won't be the assistant, it'll be the Recreation Director, Brian.
Ashley was unable to make it today.
Be able to discuss.
This is pretty straightforward and this, this is nothing new. We have worked with upon agreements with outside agencies in the past. We have two or three right now. We reached out to Wichita Gymnastics. They're close, they're local, they're established. By working, talking with them and rec staff and Maria, we came up with kind of a, kind of a wordy document, but it's, it's to cover everybody, them and us, and to spell out what everybody's roles are. One thing that is a little different than some of the current agreements that we have, we're going to do a 50 50 split. Others, we do a 70 30 split. With them doing all the administrative, all we do is provide a place and a safe place. For example, the dance program that we have, that's how we're doing that. This one was a little different. They didn't want to mess with the administrative part of it. So we're going to take that on with the help of new software that we're just thrilled to have. I was a little different mood yesterday, but today's a little better. I did see the dean's name on there like five times this morning. So he figured out how to work it. So it must not have been too bad.
I was testing it out.
So that will, that will assist us with administration. And we think this will be a good fit for Bel Air. And tumbling is a popular program. And we've already got 50 people on a waiting list, waiting for us to kick it out the door. So as far as the, the auto renewal, that's what we've used in the past. We haven't had any issue with it, but we haven't had to go to court like, like she has mentioned. Hopefully, we never will. It does save time and we feel this is a pretty good, pretty good deal with them. So we feel comfortable with that. If, if council would rather have the renew, the look at it every year, that would be all right, too. Although I might tell you that it did take us almost four months when we first talked to them until we got this in front of you today. So it would be very difficult, maybe not four months worth, but it is difficult going back and forth and getting everything in line with an agreement like this. So where we're at.
All right. Well, thank you. One question I did have, is there some price structure in their agreement? I know I wrote.
They really wanted us to bring this to you to make sure it was agreeable but amongst both parties before we took that next step. They didn't want to, you know, put, put their people out there and commit to a time and a day. We'll price it similar to what we already have. And we can bring that back to you if, if so, or however you'd like to see that. But days and times and prices have not been really set yet. We've discussed them, they just have not been set.
Okay, so that's done as an addendum or how is that, how's that done?
It can be done as an addendum. And with this, working with Wichita Gymnastics, they have insurance carrier providers, but there are certain things that they need. So if this agreement is approved, then they would go ahead and finalize on their end, work out some type of a schedule with staff. They are more than happy to work out anything. This was the difficult part. They just need to look at calendars, start time, end times.
They're just specifics. That's the easy part.
Okay, well, and I will allow council to speak to this as well as much as they'd like. My personal preference is that you do an auto renewal, but maybe have an annual addendum for schedule and price. Because you need to know, you need to manage those things, right? So, but anyone else have any comments or questions for Mr. Brian?
Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Ms. Amber.
My thinking is, is the first time out, it's a little bit different structure. We might have wanted to make it a one-year contract, but I suspect if we're having issues, we'll be on, they'll be on it 30 days in advance. So I'm okay making this auto renewal.
Thank you. Mr. Welsh, did you have something?
Yeah, I did notice item two has a blank in it. We need to specify what that is before we agree to it. It's the number of days that they need to let you know what's going on before you for marketing materials.
I have some information on that, Mayor. So I asked the representative with this organization, what's their preference? They really didn't have a set preference. They would like to, if this agreement is approved, then they will again get back with staff to figure out what works for both parties. There was, there was no specific request for that time. They've been very cooperative, very helpful. In fact, I even told that representative as far as a fix or an automatic, I can't even tell you right now that will go in front of council. So they'll take that into account as well. But I do not foresee any issues of them trying to be challenging with staff.
I'm not comfortable leaving blanks.
The way I'm reading this, it has two options. Eight and nine, one or the other. And the way I, the way I'm reading this is we need to make a motion to pick which option we're going to go with. And at the same time, we can state what we need those days to be or we can say that needs to be negotiated before we start the deal. Does that make sense? Either one, but I agree with you, it shouldn't be left blank.
My other thing was I would prefer the auto renew. That's my comment.
Mr. Mayor. Does Ted or Brian have input on, I'm assuming we have a poll or some sort of way we start classes so many days after we publish them to the site for registration? Is there a days that you would recommend?
Probably 30.
Yeah, so auto renewals aren't that, I mean, copier renewals, you just 30 days is the standard if, if you're looking for the standard.
I think it's a different question.
Yeah, this one was, this was for the publishing, the schedules and basically the time it takes to get enrolled before the class starts.
I think Brian's question, answer was to that question, right? Which is different than those of renewal.
Yeah, so I don't have any issue with the auto renewal as well. I just wanted to get the feedback on what days we might put in if we're going to do a motion. Thank you.
Other questions or concerns?
Mr. Mayor. I'll make a motion to approve a partner program agreement with Wichita Gymnastics LLC as an automatic renewal agreement. Authorize the mayor to sign with the addition of a 30 days in the item two blank.
I'll second.
Just to clarify, a motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean. Just to clarify, did you select an option as to whether it's an auto renewal?
Right.
Okay, you did. Okay, I was, didn't catch that. I just want to clarify, make sure it was there. Okay, very good. So I have a motion by Mr. David and a second by Mr. Dean. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? That motion carries five to zero. Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor, I'd also like just to thank staff, Maria, I know that took time, Brian and whoever else at the rec. I think it's great when we can find ways to increase the programming at the rec and help make it convenient for our citizens to utilize that facility. So appreciate you guys' efforts.
Move on to item C. If I get my computer right. Okay, so item C, each year, Bel Air Municipal Water Conservation Plan needs to be updated and revised. And Utility Advisory Committee has reached out to citizens and worked with City Attorney Maria Schrock and draft the plan before you tonight. Terry Eric Carlini and Mr. Dan Broyles are here from the Utility Advisory Committee to discuss and answering questions. We did make a couple of technical questions, changes to this plan from what was originally published in your packet. So on page five, it says Bel Air is a Class 7M. Since we are no longer, we are larger now than 10,000 people in population, this is revised to reflect a Class 7L. But the reference document from state of Kansas needs to be updated. So we have to kind of leave the 7M in there, but can't, want to recognize that we are now 7L. Page 10, enforcement through city codes is problematic and changed this to recommend to city council since Bel Air city codes do not currently require pool covers. And that was a requirement that all pools have to have a pool cover. All new pool installations or refurbished need to have pool covers. So that was a change that was made to the draft that was in the packet. And then the last change was on page 14 under goals to change it from 2022 to 2023 because this plan, each, each stage refers back to the baseline year of 2023, which is table one in the, in the, the plan. That's our baseline and we'll always refer back to that as long as this drought continues. If it continues for two years or, or three years or whatever it is, that will be the baseline. Once the drought is over, change the new baseline. But that's where the baseline will be for, for now. Hopefully, the drought only lasts this year, but we're still there. So those few clarifications I think were, were made. Changes from what was originally put in the packet. But if you have any questions, Mr. Carlini and Mr. Broyles are here to answer questions.
I have something. I believe we should drop trigger three from the stage four because that's the same trigger as what's on stage three and that's confusing.
So, and I'm just going to do this from memory. That, if, that is.
Both of them.
The stage four was created because Wichita created a stage four last year. We didn't previously have a stage four, but now that they created one, so we did. But the CCUA does not have a stage four in their, in their plan. They only have a stage three.
That is correct, but CCUA, the way this reads, if CCUA issues a stage three water emergency, it would trigger stage four because it says any of those following conditions. That's why I think we should delete that trigger.
Yeah. Kind of makes sense. I'll let you guys weigh in on that because you guys did a lion's share of the work. If you want to come up and speak in the mic, it'd be best. Because if you speak from out there, it's not on the, nobody on the TV or can hear you.
Yeah, I'll have to go back and, and review it a little bit. I don't see a, an issue with that. So basically, it's a stage four. Actually, I got it right here now, so thanks. Okay, so it's on a, it's a stage, it's the trigger on stage four, right?
Yes.
Okay. And it's item three?
Yes.
We, we put that in because it is possible. The, as a supplier to us has the ability to issue that stage or, you know, to, to do that. And then we are then beholden to them to, to then honor that. So I guess it comes down to, is it possible? Is there a feeling that it's not possible?
The way I read the whole document, if CCUA issues a stage three, then we'll go into a stage three emergency. So I don't, I don't see stage three ever triggering a stage, stage three from CCUA ever triggering a stage four water emergency.
Yeah.
It looks like stage four would only be triggered by an emergency condition or Wichita. And I'm okay with those two triggers. I just don't think the third one needs to be there.
Okay, fair point. The, I think maybe the issue comes down to Chisholm, CCUA does not have a stage four. We had put that in there as, as, you know, a way to get in. But I, I could see the point. It probably doesn't do anything. We could remove that. I don't see a problem doing that, so.
Being as this is renewed, each revisited every, each year, if, if CCUA would come up with a stage four, we could add it next year, right?
We would definitely do that, yeah.
Currently, they don't have one, but.
They don't have one, so yeah, I guess it's, it's pretty unlikely that that could ever be a thing here, so. Yeah, we're, I think we're fine with, with that.
Mr. Henry.
The stage three of CCUA would be pretty much their highest stage of alarm, correct?
Yes.
Which means we would need to pretty much do the highest amount of conserving as a city or it, it, does it, you see what I'm saying? Does it align with our stage three enforcement, the CCUA stage three?
Yeah, I'd have to study that, but I think.
It might be something we think about over the year.
Stage three agrees with, with CCUA stage three. So I, I think it's probably okay.
Okay.
But definitely.
Something to think about as we.
For next year's.
As we become more and more reliant on CCUA for our water needs in the future, it's something to think about.
Yeah.
I think the chances of that happening are pretty slim.
I hope we never see that.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd just like things to be clear. I agree.
Yeah.
It's probably not, but I would strike it.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Amber.
First of all, thank you guys for all of your work. I know you held evening meetings and tried to get as much citizen feedback as possible. So appreciate all this work over these months. I had a question for the city attorney. So on page 10, about the regulation action to be taken regarding the pool covers, when do you anticipate that coming before city council?
Thank you. That's, that's a good question. Our zoning administrator, who is also our director of community and planning, she would look into that further, determine what the potential language would be for the definition, any enforcement provisions. Then also taken into account whether that needs to go in front of the planning commission for discussion and ultimately the governing body. And I think Ted has something to add.
You know how my staff's been doing a lot with this ERP system? About over the next year, you guys are going to hear a lot about codes and zoning and really what the strategy is to get the comprehensive plan published. And then at the same time, right now in the background, our zoning administrator is working on updating some zoning codes. And especially, this is more pertains to the building code, which we kind of, when we went with M A B C D for the commercial side, we need to update all the commercial codes with, to Wichita. But we also need to take a good look at our residential codes. So we're going to do all that over the next year. And this is, will be an element of that building code discussion.
Thank you.
Very good. Thank you.
And Mr. Mayor, if I could just add. The UAC did such a great job with this because there were many meetings had. One of them was comparing the water conservation plan with the CCUA water conservation plan. When it comes to the CCUA's third stage, their regulation actions were out, they are. Outdoor water use is banned for all cus, water customers, which is consistent with what's in the water conservation plan currently. And then their second was that waste of water is prohibited, which is literally word for word what is in the proposed water conservation plan as well. I looked at a few of the education items. They are also consistent with what is. So I just wanted to share that when the UAC was putting all this together, there was multiple pamphlets out for the CCUA, City of Wichita, and then historical for the Bel Air as well.
Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Dean.
I also want to thank the UAC. I know that took a lot of effort and really appreciate your guys' work on it. One thing I did want to note, and it certainly doesn't need to be put in this plan now, but I think one thing that could be important to review, maybe not a part of this plan specifically, but something the UAC could tackle is how the use, more use of reuse water could be beneficial to the city, but also to drought response or to being more resilient. Now, we do have that, that asset that isn't being utilized as much as it could. And it's just something that, you know, seeing your regulation and your actions of recommendation on that list just made me think that that could be, maybe be something that is looked at a little closer. Thank you.
Mr. Mayor.
Schmidt.
I think we're missing a significant opportunity.
I think we're missing a significant opportunity. Since we do not only get our water, if we only got our water from Wichita, I could see where we would match their plan exactly, which is kinds like we're kind of doing. Which I think is kind of detrimental to the advantage we have with having another source of water. If in the future we would continue to improve or enhance our water capability, we would still be strapped to the issues that Wichita has with their water. Now I know they put the new plan in so they can do 100% from the water, from the ground. They can also use, mix it with the, with the lake water as well to mitigate some of those issues. But the fact that we're doing a plan that gives us no leverage on our water, I think. Not to the benefit, the best benefit to the, to the people in Bel Air. So I would like to have the way it be written is it's recommended for, when they're in phase two. And we can withhold water usage from Wichita up to, that's 10%, I know in stage two, and we could even do 20%. In fact, we were doing 100% from our wells to help Wichita out. That's assuming Wichita doesn't hold us to the contract that says we have to have a minimum water usage. So if they don't change that for us, then I think we need to just go to that minimum. We should not go pay a premium. To save water for Wichita when they have the opportunity to pull more water out of the ground if they chose to. So that would be one, but assuming they, they're, we're not at the minimum. Then I would say we can take in stage two, maybe if they, they ask for 10, we can give them 20 or even 30%. And then allow our users for in stage two to be voluntary. And hope everybody, we can monitor it and our guys can monitor it, the utilities and see, you know, are we, can we easily cover Wichita's requirement? And even better, help them some more. But then as we get even more capability in the future, we hope to get more sources of water for Bel Air. Then I think we're in a better position for that eventuality. When Wichita has issues with water, because they're going to keep growing in more ways and pick up other cities. Why should Bel Air be constrained by their constraints? Not that we don't want to help, but I think we should be able to leverage our capabilities to help our citizens.
I think those are pretty good points. One of the things to keep in mind about this plan is that. Wichita, if, as I remember right, and correct me if I have it wrong, Cherry. Wichita does not in their code specify what constitutes any stage. They just do it by something they state on their website, which kind of is a little bit loose because that's very changing. I mean, we could push back and say, this is what you said on your website on this date and, and that's why we're there. But. You know, it's, it's something that they could probably change at, at a whim. So. This plan was put together to say, we're not going to get into the nuts and bolts of how they determine what is a stage two or stage three. It's just if they declare stage two or stage three, we're going to declare that. But I think you have some legitimate things to think about for future that, that would be, be beneficial to pursue. So.
Mr. Mayor, I do want to clarify though. I think I heard you say, you didn't say water rights, but you're, you're referring to those, those are not the city of Bel Airs. I think those are CCUAs if I, if I remember.
Yeah.
So technically we don't have any water rights.
As a city, we do not. That's true.
And then secondly, Maria, I want you to clarify the contractual side of things. This isn't a contract. This is the city putting together a plan to try to help meet a contractual obligation. I think that we've kind of went over with using city of Wichita waters. It'd be good to have at least some comments from the attorney. So we understand that.
I do have that with me. It is the wholesale water sales agreement. It's dated November 20th, 2007. The parties are city of Wichita and city of Bel Air. There is a section within that agreement. It's identified as article five, conditions of water service to customers of Bel Air. I will just read off a few of them. According to article 5.1. Bel Air agrees that its water conservation plan shall reflect any changes Wichita makes to its program. That. Bel Air agrees to institute for its customers, any water restrictions imposed by Wichita on its customers. Within 48 hours of written notice, a promulgation of such restrictions from Wichita. That Bel Air agrees to adopt an ordinance requiring that any plumbing fixtures, low water use type to the extent. As required by the ordinance of Wichita, as they may be time to time be amended and needed. And then finally, Bel Air agrees that any violation of the provisions of this article shall result in a surcharge on rates for water service. From Wichita to Bel Air and the amount of 10% above the rates is outlined in article seven, for as long as the said violations shall continue. But that's the section of the agreement that discusses the drought response and any potential penalties.
We got a couple of comments. Some of why we're tackling this. Just wanted to give some background to it.
Correct me, but I, I think. Our city manager negotiated with the city of Wichita that when they're in these drought plans, they no longer can enforce the take or pay agreement.
For 2024, they did not enforce the take or pay agreement.
Okay. And the other thing is, I believe we need to do this because Wichita is an emergency backup supplier at a minimum. So if something happened, we weren't following their lead and our plant had a catastrophe. And Wichita is mad at us because we're not in their same water emergency, then what do we do for water?
Well, you definitely would support their 10%. We'd actually do 20%. So we could do more than what they're asking for.
You're, you're working under the best case scenario that CCUAs are running at 100%. But if there's a problem at CCUA, now we need Wichita water. And I don't want them to be mad at us and say, you guys don't act like we're in a drought. We don't feel like giving you any water.
I think, I think just to back this up. That's for future thinking and I agree for the future thinking. I don't want to cut that off, but, but for tonight, I don't think we need to, to put that in, in play. But I do think as we look at maybe next year's revision, we might want to consider one of those options. And I think you have some good points there. I'm not disputing those. I think Tom had some good points too. So.
I, I think my real point is that we should go with this tonight, basically as it is. And not, not be trying to stick it to Wichita or whatever.
Yeah.
We've got a good enough relationship with them. We don't need to be muddy in the water, so to speak.
I agree. I think we're all going in the same direction. I hope so.
I was just going to add that. It's the, the contractual issue here was, was actually a big part of, well, if we're going to do this, you know, we're going to do citizen input, let's make sure we do this right. And it quickly became, you know, we're all, we're talking and Maria is with us too. And we realized that there's contractual issues that are not part of this. And, you know, there's the water contract stuff and then there's us trying to create a document that, that shows how to, how we will conserve. Putting that boundary on things kind of, kind of set that discussion of what happens when we want to do this and this and this with water, who pays? Kind of put that back to Maria there. So that's a, that's, that's a different camp. It was definitely thought about as we were doing this over the last couple of years. It's, it's been forefront in our mind, especially through the drought. So I think we're going to have more discussions with Maria as we keep doing this.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion to adopt the municipal water conservation plan 2025 as amended to strike trigger three from stage four. And authorize the mayor to sign and submit to the city of Wichita.
Okay, most from Mr. Welch. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Second for Mr. David. Any additional questions or discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
I have, that motion carries four to one with Mr. Schmidt opposed. Very good. Thank you. We'll move on to, and guys, thank you very much. I know you guys spent a lot of time on this, especially Terry. Terry's, Terry's been the, the hard worker on this one. But the whole team has. So thank you. Move on to item D. If I can get my file back up here. So. The city has been utilizing IT vendor to purchase computer replacements each year since our partnership began in 2022. The city is on a four-year replacement schedule for computers to ensure all equipment stays under warranty and is kept up to date. City computer replacement schedule averages 6.5 devices per year, or 16.5 devices per year. And the number of devices scheduled for replacement in 2025 is 16. So Mr. Barry Smith is here to discuss and answer questions.
Good evening, mayor and council. As the mayor explained, it's time for our computer replacements for 2025. We do a certain number each year around that 16 to 17 mark to make sure all of our equipment stays up to date. Imagine IT has always been our provider. They work exclusively with Lenovo products and they are preferred, been there for Lenovo. They do get special pricing from them. The item is before you this evening because it is over that $10,000 threshold. So we need council approval on that. And we also found out late last week. That the pricing is going to go up about $3,300 if we didn't go ahead and approve that quote and get ratified tonight with council. But I did make sure with our IT vendor that if it is not approved tonight, they're not going to hold us liable for this quote. It's been approved. So it's just an annual step to replace our aging machines and infrastructure and keep them up to date.
So the issue is that we, we see some tariffs coming and that's going to increase the price immediately. Is that correct or is that not?
Yeah. So we found out late last week, they take effect, well, they took effect yesterday, March 3rd. For the desktops and laptops.
They're going to hold the old price if we approve this tonight.
Yep. I went ahead and approved the quote last Friday so we could lock in the pricing. But if it is not approved tonight, our company is not going to hold us accountable for the quote. They'll find another place to pick machines.
Okay. That's okay. Now I understand what you meant by they're not being held accountable. Okay. That's very good. Thank you.
No, they're very flexible and we're great partners with them. So they don't mind doing that.
I've, I've got a question. These computers don't seem that old. And so my question really is the replacement computers, the reason we're buying them is because of Windows 11. Are the computers we're buying just barely enough to run Windows 11? Or do they far exceed that so that they could still be usable in five or six years?
Yeah, the equipment in them, it's not necessarily 100% the case that they can't support Windows 11. It's more along the lines of the warranty and the constant maintenance on them. So we like to keep all of our devices under that warranty period. So if anything ever happens to them, we can get them replaced.
Can we extend the warranty with the equipment we have?
And I'm sure we could get some extended warranties, but it's going to be a couple hundred dollars a computer. And they're only one year at a time, those extended warranties. It's just going to backlog their replacement schedule. So we just like to keep them up to date, refreshed every four years.
I just know my computers at home last a lot longer than that. I use them all day, every day.
You know, the big part of this was that Windows 10 is end of life October 14th of this year, which means it's no longer going to be updated and patched by Microsoft. So allows more vulnerabilities for bad actors to get into the operating system. So we like to get all this switched over to the newest, latest operating systems as well.
How many Windows 10 machines do we have?
After these 16, there's these up here at the desk at the bench. And I think there's like an additional 10 after that. They're not necessarily the computers that are used every day by staff.
Right. So the plan would be to replace these like next year?
Yep. These, these are on the list for next year.
Any other questions or discussion?
I will make a motion to approve the quote from Imagine IT from computer replacement program 2025 at a cost not to exceed $27,697.
I'll second.
A motion, I have a motion for Mr. Welch and a second for Mr. David. Any other questions or discussions? Hearing none, I'll call for a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries five to zero.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay. So the next item and only item left is executive session. So we do need a 15 minute executive session. So I'll entertain a motion to do that.
Mr. Mayor.
Ms. Hamburg.
I'm going to make a motion to recess and to executive session to discuss with legal counsel and receive legal advice related to pending litigation. The discussion will be pursuant to KSA 75-4319B2 for legal consultation with Neil Gosh, which would be deemed privileged in the attorney client relationship. Invite the city manager, city engineer, city attorney and Catherine Chlumsky. The meeting will be for a period of 15 minutes and the open meeting will resume in city council chambers at 8:15 PM.
I'll second.
Motion by Ms. Hamburg, a second by Mr. Dean. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Hold the same sign. We are in executive session for 15 minutes. All the same sign. We are in executive session for fifteen minutes. Okay, we held an executive session. Uh, no binding action was taken. I'm calling meeting back to order. We'll move on to item fourteen, discussion and future issues. So um you'll notice that Mr. Dean is wearing a nice red hat. He uh found the baby Jesus in the king cake, so he gets the, the crown tonight, so. Congratulations.
I gladly accept.
All right. Um, council workshop next week, seven P M.
Yeah, so we're gonna do a special meeting at seven. Uh, it's a CCU A. As, as the mayor discussed, we're gonna do a special CCU A meeting on Thursday and then next Tuesday, we're gonna pass the ordinance for the bond issue. I believe that's what it would be.
CCA is gonna have a special meeting on Thursday. We're gonna have a special meeting on Tuesday.
Tuesday.
Right.
Tuesday. So same time, same pa, same place, but we'll open a special meeting, close a special meeting and then start the workshop immediately after. In the workshop, we're gonna learn a little bit about the abatement process. We're gonna discuss and hopefully put to bed the credit card fee discussion we started uh a few uh weeks ago. And then uh gonna talk a little bit about water restrictions. So that's what I have planned, Mr. Mayor. Welcome to add anything if you need to, but that's quite a bit.
Drought restrictions. Anything else anybody thinks we need to discuss next week? Very good. Uh, if there's nothing else, uh, we need to discuss and discussion and future issues, we'll move on to adjournment.
Motion we adjourn.
I have a motion by Mr. Welsh, a second by Mr. David. All in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? We are adjourned. If motion passes five to zero. And good night, everybody. Thank you, and we'll see you next Tuesday.